All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isetanee City Council of the Order. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Doing roll call, we have all members present. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing done, look for a motion to adopt the agenda. Do we have any changes?
We do not, thank you, Mayor.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Lundeen and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For proclamations, we have the, oop, one second, we've got the MMBA Pet Supply Drive Check Presentation to Rough Start Rescue.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having us here. As part of the 10th Annual MMBA Pet Supply Drive, we're happy to present a check in the amount of $3,503 and a penny to Rough Start Rescue. Rough Start Rescue is a local organization that has been working tirelessly since 2010 to rescue animals in need. The amount that we were able to raise is 100% of the donations made by customers of Isetanee Liquor, so the real thanks actually belongs to them. We're just the vehicle to get those donations there. We're lucky to have some of the greatest customers in the area, and their willingness to donate to this organization is a direct reflection of how they value the services that Rough Start Rescue provides. So, um, thank, thank you. So, I've got a check if you guys want to do a picture.
Sure. All right, awesome. Well, thank you, Keith. And thank you to the residents and all the customers that donated too, so. All right, we're moving on to approving the city council meeting minutes from May 7th of 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we've got the Park and Recreation Board meeting on Tuesday, May 28th at 6:00 PM. We've got our city council meeting on Tuesday, June 4th at 7:00 PM. And an EDA meeting also on June 4th immediately following the council meeting that evening. Do we have any council committee reports?
I do have a little bit of an update. So, school board will meet this coming Thursday, so I'll have an update on that at the next council meeting. I missed the last Chamber of Commerce meeting because Jimmy and I had a meeting with the county to talk about election security. I think the county of Isetanee is doing a pretty good job with our election security. I guess the takeaway that I got from that was that we need to be more impactful towards our state leadership. Some of the state laws are not totally conducive to secure elections, so I would like all of us in leadership and in the community to make it a point to reach out to state legislature to try and shore up some of the sort of shady laws that I see weakness in. But I think the county's doing a good job, and I appreciated the time they took with us to talk about that. And I'm looking forward to voting in November.
Yeah, we had the fire district meeting. Unfortunately, our other paid, full-time employee technician, Nick Bart, stepped down from that position. Chief Jankovic is kind of coming up with a, kind of a hybrid we're giving a little test to see about other firemen filling in that duties, and they would get their paid-on-call duty pay, which helps, which by the time he's all said and done, what we've been paying him to do is those other tasks will probably be less money, so it'll be a huge savings. Fire calls are way down still with the, with the program that we started and which I think we move forward with, with the non-emergent calls that they don't have to make runs on. We, he's got some carrier over money that he's using to purchase some other equipment that are in dire needs, which we kind of went forward with that, so I think that's all looking good. I think at that time, we've also voted on that they are going to take over the complete building a year early, as per discussed and what was offered to them to do that, and they agreed on those terms. But we have some other stuff to talk about later on down in here with them. But yeah, other than that, it's looking good.
Jimmy, I know we were talking in Committee of the Whole, we're going to talk more about election security. Did you have anything to add to that about the meeting with the county and anything to maybe elaborate on?
Sure, yeah. I mean, you kind of, kind of let me go back to my notes here for, for that, but yeah, if we want to talk about that now, we could, we could certainly, certainly mention that. Yeah, no, I think, you know, we met with, with Commissioner LaRoe and Commissioner Duff, and like you said, the Auditor Treasurer Angie Larson and County Administrator Usher. And so first off, yeah, thank you for, to them for taking the time to do that. And then I think, you know, from my impression, I think that, that the Auditor Treasurer Angie kind of took, took the, the questions that we were raising sort of personally, and I don't think that that was, that was never what we had tried to imply or tried to say. We did say that some of the responses that we'd gotten by email were more of a canned response, but, which I still, still stand by, but that doesn't mean it's her fault. I mean, that's just, that's what it is. I mean, she's just telling us the information that I don't think we ever meant to, to convey that that was an issue that we had with her of, by any, by any means. I mean, she's just like a police officer enforcing the laws. I mean, she's not the one that makes the laws, right? So, so she's, she has a job to do, and I think she does it, does it very well. So, you know, to kind of recap what our goals were and what we were really questioning about was that we wanted to, to take the ballots that were cast in the electronic voting machine and then hand count a couple of races to verify that that machine total matched with what the hand count was before we send those ballots off to, to the county. So that way, we're not, you know, losing that chain of custody and, and so we must not be the only people asking about that because she did say that there, the state actually is putting language in that specifically says you cannot do that. So, there's things in there that you could interpret now that say you, you can't do that, sort of, kind of, but it's fairly vague. And so, so there are, she did mention that if I'm, I'm right, I mean, I think I'm remembering that, recalling that correctly. So, so they don't want you to do that, and, and the state is, is, is also gonna, gonna take some action on that at some point, it sounds like. So, just to clarify that issue, but...
And that's one thing that I think our residents need to reach out to legislature about, legislature about, because if we don't have election security, we don't have much. So, if they're going to continue to push those laws, we have to stand up as a community against those sorts of things, so.
Sure. Yeah, and then the other thing that, that we, that we were looking at was that we wanted to see, well, could we, could we post what they call a cast vote record? And in our, in our understanding of that, it was an actual, like a PDF image of the ballot and how it was calculated by the machine with, with data that goes with that. Well, the machines here at the county are not equipped to do that, and they're not required to do that by state law. And so, the only thing that they could maybe potentially provide is something that they do over in Shisago County, I believe she said, that's textual data that, that does show some stuff, but it's got to be heavily redacted and that kind of thing. And so, and that wasn't something that, that the county auditor was interested in, in pursuing. And I can't remember if the machines they had now even had the ability to do that or not, or if...
Yeah, they have the ability to get the textual, but they have to spend, it would be like four days of redacting personal info, or information that it would, yeah, it's probably not worth it.
And the reason that we're even talking about this, I mean, for, somebody out there is thinking, well, this is outside of their purview and this is not in the city business. Well, we do have two precincts that we're in charge of, of managing and, and, you know, facilitating that process going through, through our area here. So, we do have some, some interest in making sure that those elections are done fairly and accurately, and it's a, it's a nonpartisan issue in my book. I mean, I'm not some election conspiracy guy or anything like that. I mean, you had Democrats and you had Republicans that both, Democrats in 2016 and Republicans in 2020, saying the election was stolen or rigged, or the Russians did it, or whatever it might be. So, I think the more you can, can get people to be confident in the election process, the more turnout you're going to have and the better, you know, the more franchise you make the general public. So, and every vote does matter, for sure. So, so that's kind of where we're at with that. I think bottom line, like Luke said, I think we're not going to probably solve that problem. There are some things that we can certainly talk about in the, maybe next month at the Committee of the Whole where the city processes involved with election night, we do have some, some more control over, that, that we could maybe do some, some tweaking with. And of course, after the election is over, when we're doing, we're acting as a canvassing board on our local elections, there we have a considerable amount of, of things that we could do there. So, but that's two weeks after the election night, so I mean, it's not quite what we were looking to try to accomplish, but it doesn't hurt to ask, you know, and I think you, you know, we just, we're doing the best we can to represent our residents up here and what they're concerned with, and that was something that, that we wanted to take a deeper dive into, and that's where we're at right now, so.
And we, we did, yeah, we did talk about needing election judges for the county and the city. The city did just up the pay. So, if anybody's interested, reach out to us, and we need good judges to make sure everything's going as planned.
Absolutely. All right, any other council committee reports? All right, then we'll move on to K1, the Well Four Evaluation Update. From Brian from Bolton and Bank here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, so there is a memo in your packet with an update on the wells. So, just a quick update of where we were when I was here a couple of months ago. We'd looked at kind of water usage over the last few years, and one of the primary things we noted was that your, your firm capacity, which is your well capacity if your biggest well is out of service. So, with your biggest well down, how much water can you pump in a day? And we discussed that. In that scenario, if your biggest well is out of service, or either of your biggest two wells, that you don't have enough water to meet the max day demands that you guys have been seeing over the last few years. So, the next thing we had moved forward with was looking at increasing that water supply. Last time, we had discussed the existing wells and the possibility of modifying those for greater water supply. At the time I was here, we had looked at the aquifer conditions. If the aquifer could actually provide enough water to those wells, and, and that was a positive, that the aquifer could provide that. So, since that time, we've been looking at the wells themselves, the well construction, and, and that's where we've kind of hit a roadblock, that the existing wells themselves is likely not a good idea to try to increase the capacity in those wells for a couple reasons. The, the main thing is that they, in the past, have shown that they pump sand at higher flow rates. And so, we, we looked at some possible ideas of, you know, could we add screening to the wells to, to prevent the sand from coming in? Could we redevelop and do some of those other things to try to get more out of those existing wells? We got information from well drillers that had worked on these projects. And the conclusion we came to is that it, it's probably just too big of a risk to try to get more out of those wells, and you could go through efforts and end up pumping sand and have to go back down to the rates you're at right now. So, we're, we're not comfortable looking to try to increase the capacity out of those existing wells. However, the aquifer itself that those wells are sitting in can provide the water. And we had had some previous talks about the Mount Simon and what's going to be available for capacities. And so now, really where the focus is going to go is location for a new well, to help supplement those capacities. And so, the next phase we're kind of entering into is trying to find well location placement. And there's different variables that go into what's going to be the most economical for where the well is situated. So, the memo that was provided kind of laid out two different options that we're looking at, and one of them would be, can we drill near an existing well so that we can use some of the infrastructure from that well for the new well? Existing piping or even a building, can we reuse something that's there to try to save money that way? Or do we need to go completely away from where the existing wells are and kind of, kind of start new? And there's kind of pros and cons to both of those. So, obviously, if we, we drilled near an existing well, we have well interferences that can take place when the wells are too close to one another. One option we are going to look into more is well one is an older well, and it's also a lower capacity. It's only 300 gallons a minute, where two and three are 800 and 900 gallons a minute. And so, could potentially that well be replaced with a bigger well, and then the infrastructure reused there to help with capacity? That would be one option we look at. We'll also look at being closer to wells two and three, and can we reuse any of that infrastructure? Then the other options would be somewhere a bit farther away where you maybe end up with another wellhouse at that well, and we kind of run separate infrastructure for the well. And so, that's the path we're, we're looking at now, is new well locations. Included in the memo on the back sheet, there was, was a figure provided with some of the possible well locations for the future wells. And what I will say too is, given that the capacities of the existing wells are going to stay about where they're at now, to maximize the existing treatment facility, ultimately, there's probably going to be two more wells, so wells four and five, that would serve the existing treatment plant. That would, would meet the capacity available at that treatment plant. So, right now, we're probably talking about well four, but as, as usage increases, at some point, there'd probably be well five, and those five wells would max out the existing treatment plant. From the previous time we discussed, based on about 100 homes per year, the existing treatment plant looks like it would carry you to 2040, 2045, somewhere in there. And so, obviously, with, with growth, that, that timeline can kind of change. So, I'll just pause there to see if there's any questions on any of the information so far.
So, with the water treatment facility we currently have, say that year comes, would we be adding another water treatment facility or removing the original one and upgrading it? Because I see, right now, we're pretty developed on the west side of 65, but I see the east side obviously developing. We were just talking about that in our earlier meeting. Would it make sense to just add another, another water treatment facility on the other side of 65 economically, or what, what do people usually do when they come into this situation?
So, there, there are different options available, right? There, like you said, there could be going to a bigger centralized facility that takes you out, you know, even longer. What we've talked about, what I think is probably going to be the right path for the city of Isetanee, is probably a second treatment facility. And actually, when we did the original well study, if you recall our discussion, we were looking at different aquifers that might be available, and there were actually some identified actually east of 65 in a good location. Because the other thing that may take place is, is a, a second water tower, which would likely be coming, you know, probably in the next five to 10 years. And if growth is going to happen east of 65, a water tower on that side of the highway would probably be beneficial to serve that area. And then maybe that site where the tower goes would be a future site for this water treatment plant two and future wells. So, the preliminary information we have on the hydrogeology here was, was very positive, actually, towards that solution for the future. And so, you know, knowing that over the next 15 years, you'll probably be looking towards where you're maxing out the existing treatment plant, that's probably where you're next headed. And we've talked about before, some of the regulations on the Mount Simon aquifer and some of those things could, could change over time too, to where, when you do need to ex, a new treatment plant, we could be dealing with different regulations on the groundwater too that might be more advantageous for the city, so.
Okay, so we, we're talking about adding another well now. Average water tower, how many gallons of water does that hold? 300,000?
Your current tower is 750.
Okay, so if, so if you think we're going to need a second tower, would it be more advantageous just to add a second tower now instead of a well? Because then you have that peak time, 750,000 gallons, that you already have up in storage. So, during slow times, you fill the water tower, and then during peak times, you have that cushion. Would it be more advantageous for us right now, instead of worrying about drilling another well, just to add another tower?
So, that won't solve your problem, and I'll explain why. So, the, the tower helps with fluctuations over a 24-hour period.
Right.
So, your high demands, it can supply, and you can replenish over the other time. The problem is, is those towers only get you through the 24 hours. So, if you have three, four, five days in a row of high usage, then your well is going to be the limiting factor. And so, that's where you could run into trouble. And, and typically, we see that, right? It's not just one peak day, it's a week of 95 degrees, and it's been dry. So, you do need the well to, to carry through that. And I think in terms of the tower, on, on the capacity conversation, your capacity you have now is adequate for a few years yet. And one of the big things though was before that tower needs rehabilitation again, is having a second tower in place. So, you have flexibility to take the 750 down.
Right.
Which was more of a challenge the last summer when they painted that tower because it was the only tower in town. And so, I think that tower still stays on your capital improvement plan in the 2030 timeframe as planned. And just looking at the spacing out, I, I have a schedule in here for the rest of the well project on the bottom of the second page. So, we're hoping with the site selection here over the next month or two to kind of have that moving forward. Then it would go into a final design phase for the well. Now, depending on where the site is, we will evaluate whether a test well should be drilled just to verify the geology below the area. And that really comes down to how many other wells we have close by to tell us what the geology is like below, whether we need that test well or not. But final, test well would add a little bit more time to this if we decide that's necessary. But final design, the second half of the year, the project could be bid in early '25, and then you're probably looking, needing a year to probably get that well up and running between equipment deliveries for electrical equipment, things like that. So, probably about two years or a year and a half to have, have everything up and running towards the end of '25. So, so anyway, that would be well four, and then well five, probably needed, you know, four, five, six years, just depending on growth and what the exact capacity well four is. Because until you drill it and test pump it, there's always question of what the capacity's going to be. And so, just beware that there'd be another well kind of in the long, long-term planning. So, for the most part, this is just kind of an update for the council. We're going to be continuing to work through this phase, and then, once we have site selection worked out with staff, we would come back with kind of a scope for the final design to work through that process. But we kind of need to nail down a few more details here before we're, we know exactly what, what path we're moving forward, so.
You mentioned flow rate earlier. If you increase the flow rate, you were worried about sand or sediment in water. What, what's involved in increasing the flow rate? And also, what percentage were you going to increase the flow rate to achieve the numbers that, that you thought would work?
So...
Can we do less than that? So, if you were going to increase the flow by 15 or 30%, and you were concerned at that time with sediment, if we went 10 or 15%, would we be in a safer zone? And then also, one more question, you said the one well had a capacity of 300 gallons per minute, I believe it was.
Well one?
Can, what is the cost to upgrade that, and can we upgrade that to 900?
So, so the first question is, you know, could there be incremental increases in capacity? And one of the things, as we were talking to the well drillers that drilled some of these existing wells, is they did actually try to run them higher earlier on on these specific wells, and so the wells you have are actually turned down a bit. So, so even the, even the incremental 10% increases, I think they've already been kind of turned down to try to get the max flow without moving the sand. So, that, over time, when these wells were drilled, I think was actually kind of tested.
I think, if I remember right, I think we had an issue not that long ago where we had to clear sand out of, and, and I think we burned up a pump or something like that too, maybe, or did we not?
It's part of the reason why we had to have it rebuilt, because we had pumped sand at one time, and then done the number on the shaft on the pump.
Do you know which well that was?
What's that?
Do you know which well that was offhand? I don't remember.
Well two.
Was it two? Okay. So, if we were to upgrade well one, is that far enough away from two and three to not worry about basically sucking it dry at the, at the other wells? Or is that geographically far enough? Or, I mean, I, to me, it sounds a little more appealing to upgrade what we have, but I don't know if it's still a risk and what that risk factor would be.
So, I think that's something we would have to, have to continue to dig into more with, with well one. It, it looks like, just given the, the spacing of the other wells and the influences, it might be possible. What, for well one though, what it, what it likely means is drilling a new well at that site. It's not reusing the casing because all of the restrictions of how that one was constructed are, are still constraints.
Okay.
So, I'm not, I, I haven't, we haven't gotten into it deep enough yet. I do not have a confidence level whether or not that is a good idea, to be honest with you.
If you're going to be drilling a new one, you might as well drill it somewhere else, almost, anyways.
Well, and, and the only reason that one's even thought, I think, is because it is such a small capacity.
Right.
That could we use the wellhouse and the piping and eliminate a lot of other extra costs? We might find that that is not a good idea at all, and, and we just haven't, haven't gotten far enough to, to figure that out yet.
Is, is 900 gallons like the maximum? I mean, if we're going to upgrade from 300, can we go to 1,200?
It, it comes down, yeah, it comes down to how the well is drilled and, and the geology there, and so wells are kind of funny, right? We can go in hoping to get 1,000 gallons a minute, and when, when, it sounds like when two and three were drilled, they were expected, hoping to get 1,000 or 1,200 gallons a minute, and they drilled them, and then when they pumped them, they kept getting sand at the higher flow rates. So, they, you know, they actually had to back them down. And so, it's really hard to predict exactly what you're going to get out of wells until you drill it and, and pump it. But I think those are things we will need to consider in the final design is, you know, what do we anticipate we could get here with a bigger well or, or a bigger open hole, bigger casing and things like that?
Okay.
My, my hope is, and this, there's not tons of science behind this, other than we have two other existing wells nearby that are 800 to 900 gallons a minute, and we're not geographically very far from that. And so, if the material's the same, my hope would be is that maybe we're looking at wells in the 800 to 900 gallon a minute range, because we're so close to that area, as long as the geology doesn't make a drastic shift.
Sure, so it might not be just a, a matter of how much water can be pumped out of aquifer. It's a matter of the way the aquifer is, how much water we can pump at one time before we have a sediment problem, so.
Correct, and there are, you know, you can put screens in the wells too to help prevent the sediment, but when you put screens in, then you get less water. And so, there's a balance between just having an open hole, which allows more water flow, but is open to sediment, versus putting a screen in, which can prevent the sediment, but then you get a lower pumping rate, so.
And it plugs up and iron's shut.
Right, so.
And you ain't like shooting a 22 down to open it up.
I'm, I'm surprised a water tower isn't designed, so even if you're taking the sand and the sediment up into the tower itself, that there isn't a lower spot that it could accumulate that and can just be flushed out of.
So, what happens is it goes into your treatment facility and goes into the filters and gets stuck on the filters.
Okay, so.
But before it gets there, it, it wears on the pumps because you're, you're pumping all, I think it's sand blasting, right? You're just running all this material through the pipe, so it's wearing out equipment. And we've had other cities where, so in your filters, you have sand media and other media. And we've seen it where one city is like, we're, we're getting more media in our filters. We're like, you can't grow it, it's sand, right? And well, it's coming out of the wells. So, it would end up in your filters, which would cause maintenance issues in your filters. And so, yeah, we, we got to keep it out, so. So, so that's kind of where we sit tonight. We have a little more work to do to come back and keep working through this with you guys, but I wanted to give an update, and if there's any other questions, be happy to handle, talk about them, so.
Any other questions at all, guys? All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the update. All right, moving on to K2, the resolution to consider, consider approving a special event permit for Rum River rods.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a special event permit for Rum River. Sorry, I lost my spot. Sorry, I lost my spot.
Rum River rods.
Rum River rods, I was just pulling out my packet, I had it up here and I lost it. Okay, there it is. For their fourteenth annual summer spectacular spectacular car show event. The event will take place Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to three PM for a one-day event. The event will be held on the streets in downtown Isani and this event is the same day as one of our street dances as usual and will conclude prior to the start of the street dance. This event is open to the public and is to include a car show, craft food vendors, muffler cap contest and a fifty-fifty raffle. There is an estimated three hundred to five hundred people in attendance. The applicant will not be required to approve additional restroom, provide additional restrooms since they'll already be there for the street dance. Later that evening. They will have walked the event area and clean up any garbage after their event between the events. And they are requesting street closure on Main Street from Railroad Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Usually it's been to Fourth Avenue, so this is a one-block extension. And all across the streets, one block north and south. Road closures will be necessary on Main Street West from the railroad tracks to the Fifth Avenue, First Avenue South from Broadway to Main. Second Avenue South from the alley north of Broadway to Faith Lutheran Church and Third Avenue Southwest from the alley north of Broadway to Faith Lutheran Church. The event site map was included in the application and in your packet. And they're requesting equipment from Public Works to include twelve barricades and four road closed signs to be utilized and dropped off. On Saturday, August tenth at eight AM. And staff is requesting action on this item. Other than the extension of the road, there's no other changes from previous years.
So I have a question on, first, I want to say great job Rum River rods for putting on this event. I think it's great and I know there are people that come to that and that's their whole experience with Isani ever. So I think it's good that they're a good organization and they do that. That's also a good entry segue to the street dance. I had a question, you said they extend the, is that the east, the eastbound boundary? I know a lot of people, usually they'll come down Main or westbound and then they'll take a left onto, I think it's a short street and go around the post office. So they're suggesting that we close further to the east this year?
Further to the west. So it'll go.
So people will still have access to short street on the west side of the railroad tracks? Because of the map here, it shows they won't. And that was my only concern because I know a lot of people come down there and then, you know, to get around it, they go behind the post office and then out.
There, the extension is to the west, so it's to, it's the other direction.
So it's going to be the same.
Past the church, it's just one more block.
Sure, so it'll be the same on the east side, okay.
Yep, nothing has changed there.
Okay, the map looks different, but.
Yeah, it's especially for the street dances so people can park.
In that part.
Yep, so they'll still have that access.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Well, I make a motion to approve this. I think this is one of the best things our community does, so.
A second, it's a real fun event. All right, I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. K three, lull lift purchase discussion.
Mayor and council, recently the Public Works Department rented a lift to seal and cock the windows at the Isani indoor arena. That particular lift has come up for sale. It would have many uses for this, for the city of Isani. The lift we rented costs approximately nine hundred and twenty dollars a day to rent that lift. This particular lift has the reach needed to perform a number of repairs around town. I listed out as many as I could. I, sure I missed something, you know, something like that. If you have it, you'll use it for something else. A number of these items are hired or contracted out on a regular basis, which is in addition to renting a lift. Number of these repairs can Public Works could probably do if we had the lift. You can kind of see, I kind of tried to put together, you know, last five years, how much we've spent on renting a lift. This year so far, we spent two thousand and fifteen and we're not even June yet, so we've rented a few times already this year. The asking price is thirty-three thousand. I think a reasonable offer could get it. I found a comparison for eighty-five thousand and another one for forty-two thousand five hundred. This particular lift we're talking about was stored indoors. It's had a recent rebuild on the engine that cost fourteen thousand dollars. I believe it'd be a great addition to the Public Works Department and pay for itself in a short period of time.
So I I have a couple of questions on this one. Do you know how many hours are on that machine?
I'm not sure. I can tell you that the person that has it, it's a local contractor that used it to, for doing blockwork. And they haven't done blockwork for a few years.
Okay, do you know how the tires are on it?
Tires are good and they could even be rubber, they could be rubber sealed as well.
Okay, because I know the tires for those are really expensive and if they're, if you buy a machine, I mean, you're out almost ten grand, so.
A lot of these came with rubber sealed tires.
Okay, um, so I, and it is a nineteen ninety-nine, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I did a little bit of digging and I think that price is a little bit high. But I mean, you guys like it and you've used it, so you know it.
I have, I work with a couple of guys that used to work for the same company that's got it for sale and they used it. And of all the lifts at this company, Hacks, they had a few lifts, this is their go-to one. This is the one they like to use. It's, you know, a couple of pictures I showed there, the one is the actual lift that we're looking at, the other one is a comparison that I found, so.
Yeah, I know, I just looked in the comparisons that you found were, you know, two thousand and twelve and I think like two thousand and six, which. I mean, it's not the end of the world to have a little bit older machine. I just think the price is a little bit high personally. Just looking at auction sites, I mean, a lot of the late nineties are between twelve and twenty. But then again, they don't have a new engine, you never know when anything's going to go bad on them. I would like to put in a fair offer, but.
Another thing on this lift, it's got a reach of forty-eight feet. And it's the only lift that we can get over the track at the BMX. There's some repairs that Travel ended up doing at his facility that this lift would get up in the ceiling high enough to do it where a lot of other ones won't.
Just for example, we we got a quote just to paint the two blue lines across, there's blue lines halfway up. Ten thousand dollars just for those two blue lines because of that issue.
Sure, yeah, I think it's a great idea to buy one. I guess I would just like to see a little bit better price on that one myself after, you know, doing some research on them. But I think it'd be definitely be a great asset for you guys.
Only problem with what you find and what they've already looked at. What you find may be a piece of junk.
Could be, yep.
And they already know what they're getting. And I'll be honest with you, the lulls aren't cheap.
I know, yeah.
And they do last longer than most people think. So I I don't, I just, my biggest concern is, you know, where's the funding going to come to pay for it? I mean, we have to, you know, is it coming out of one of his other purchases or is it going to come out of sewer and water? I mean, you know, you you guys are all concerned about, you know, watching the budget numbers, well, then that's what we got to look at.
And by my math, we're, we've had it for, you gave us six years care of kind of lift rental history and we're at about seventy-five hundred dollars over the course of that six years. So I mean, if we're taking, you know, thirty-three thousand dollars, I mean, it's not going to last thirty-three years, is it? I mean, it's, I just.
But there are other jobs that he said that's not accounted for in that total. I think it would come in handy.
I think, oh, I think it would be nice to have, for sure.
I think it would, you'd say, you'd get your money's worth out of it, but I just think that one is a little bit high price. I mean, I would rather see an offer.
But you're thinking you can, I mean, I guess I'd, before I would make a decision on that, I'd like to see, I mean. Dollar amounts on things that you'd be able to do with, but I mean, you could still do it with that by just renting the lift, right? So I mean, I guess.
Not all of them.
What'd you say?
Not all of them.
No?
No, I mean, we could, this would be, I listed out as many items I could here. But I mean, even parking lot lights at the water plant, liquor store, here at City Hall. There's different things that would make even even tree trimming safer with something like this because we could have the reach to get out there. We can't do anything inside the Isani indoor arena, inside or out. We don't have, we can't. This is the only lift we could rent that'd get us that type of stuff. And like I said, I think this would be something that if the Public Works Department had, we would find other uses for it all the time. Maybe like, hey, go get the lift, this and, you know, we've rented, silly things we've rented a lift for is to. Rented a lift to run a new rope for the flagpole at at Bluebird Park because we needed to get up there. You know, there's there's weird stuff like that that's hard to put a dollar amount on projects because when we get, you know, if our electrician comes in. And we hire him to replace light bulbs at Bluebird Park, which we have done, you know, it's a, it's an invoice I get for him doing that work. But I don't, I don't know what that part that he has that lift or, you know, it's not broken down like that. To be able to put a dollar amount on, okay, well, you know, we replaced the light bulb, here's what it costs, but, you know, what's that dollar amount? I'm not sure what that is. It's hard to put a dollar amount on that. I can just list as many items as I can that Public Works would use it for.
Did you say, if I heard you correctly, so we have lift rentals in past years and the costs. Are there things that you could do with this lift? Or are there things that, yeah, that you didn't do by hiring a lift that you could now? That you've had to hire out and those figures aren't on the sheet or for us?
And that's hard to, hard to put a number on that. I mean, I can tell you, years ago, we rented a lift. Or used a contractor in town, let us use his lift, replace the lights at Unity Ballpark. You know, because it was, it could get us up there. This would get us up there and we wouldn't have to hire anybody else. That contractor's long gone. We'd have to hire a lift. And Isani Rental wouldn't have a lift to do that.
How, that's what I was just going to say, is I just rented a boom from Isani Rental the other day and I think it was a forty-five foot reach. But I, and that was only three hundred and sixteen dollars for four hours.
There's different, there's different things, it's the reach out. You might have forty-two feet straight up.
Yeah.
But it's that reach out. And we've gotten pretty creative in unloading some deliveries down into the shop that have been very large items that, you know, you pull them out. You get them, you know, situated on the skid steer and you balance them and we've been pretty creative on on unloading some some stuff that's, you know, delivery items.
I think they would use this more than he even thinks it's.
I I believe they would too, but you have me concerned, Mayor Gordon, with your math because if if it would take them thirty-three years to spend.
That's that's only directly on rentals, that's not including if we have a contractor like you said.
As long as your, as long as your payment is less than what they're spending and then they sell it and they get, you know, the cover that's remaining on a loan or something like that or, you know, or now I guess we, we're not going to, we're not going to loan it, I guess, are we? But I mean, because we could, we could probably pay cash for that, right, Mike? So I guess my my thought process there is off, but I don't know, yeah, it's, what were you saying, George, as far as the dollar amount?
If you're, okay, so if we didn't buy it and they had to continue renting, how many years would they have to continue to rent until they spent that thirty-three thousand?
About twelve hundred bucks a year on it is what, on average, over the last six years. But what what Matt's saying is that you're going to be able to do things that you're not maybe renting it for now because it doesn't make sense to rent it. But if we had it, we could do all these other things, but.
Save staff time maybe by them doing it a different way.
Right.
Right, I I think it's it's a good idea, whether, I think the question is, is this the right one? But I think it's a great piece of equipment that they'll use and more than, more than what he's written down here. I mean, even tree trimming alone, that's a huge, a huge deal.
Yeah, just. Mike, how can we fit it into the budget?
Well, so first, just to clarify, it, you know, the numbers that I provided there at the bottom, I gave to Matt for the memo. That was just us explicitly renting a lift. It's not all the times where contractor has charged us for it, but you don't see it necessarily. And if we need to fit it in the budget, yeah. I've thought that if if council said, yep, let's go ahead, let's authorize this offer or whatever the scenario you guys would decide. I would spread it out. I would do ten percent at the, for the BMX special revenue fund. Ten percent for illuminated Isani, ten percent water, ten percent sewer, ten percent storm, five percent liquor. And I would put the other forty-five percent in Fund Nine Twenty. It's kind of a balance because I think all of those departments are going to have some measurable benefit and that's probably as accurate as I could foresee. You know, everybody pulling their own weight or each fund slash department pulling their own weight on that, so.
And that would all come out of this year's budget or you would spread it out over?
It would, it would be this year's budget. It is cash out this year, it is this year's budget and, yeah, and I would just, if you guys take that action. I will work out whether or not there needs to be a budget, a budget amendment follow-up, but, you know, once you start saying, all right, it's, you know, three grand or twenty-five hundred or whatever here and here and here. It can work, but it's, it's, yeah, if the council wants it.
Matt, how how soon do you need, are are they, is it for sale right now or are they holding off for a while? If you give them a month till we have a budget session?
It's actively for sale right now.
When you said a reasonable offer can buy it, what's a reasonable offer?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I want to say publicly.
Show my hand, but I mean.
Or I agree with that.
I think I would like to get it, but I don't think the price is quite where we need it to pull the trigger personally. So I would like to talk about negotiating on it. So would we go into a closed session for that, Josie, or for negotiation type talk? Or how would we, I mean, we can't talk about that now.
No, we can go into a nega- negotiation for land purchase or selling, but not for, not for equipment that I'm aware of. You could authorize staff to go to a certain dollar amount.
Well, that would be silly in a public meeting, though. Okay.
I guess I'd, I would like to see us just hold off on it for right now, but if it's something that we think we maybe need, then we could add it to the budget in in the future and I guess.
I think, I think we should try and put in an offer on it. It's one they know that they like. It's got a new engine in it, so.
I don't disagree with Luke, but like I said, I think, I think you. It's kind of hard not to know a dollar amount, but I I would say, I would give him authorization to go up to that amount. It would, it would, it it'll pay for itself.
Yeah, it will, it really will, I'd.
I'd authorize it to go up to that amount, but let's chisel it as low as you can get it.
Right. I mean, do you think, should we, should we talk about the number?
He doesn't want to mention it. Because if he can, he's have an idea and if somebody knows what he's going to do, they're going to go.
How do we authorize him to go for a number if we can't say a number?
Up to a certain dollar amount, so I mean, if you said, okay, well, I want to go up to thirty and then, you know.
That would be, that's what I would say, just authorize up to that amount. I'm sure he's not going to want to pay any more, cost more for it.
But then they know exactly what, we can't even negotiate with them then.
But that number is already out there.
Well, you could say up to thirty-three or, you know, whatever the price is.
That number is already there, that's already public.
So thirty, the thirty-three is up to the, that's, that's what they're asking, so.
Yeah, what if we say?
Give him, give him up to thirty-three and then let him work with with what he's got available, but.
I see what you're saying.
But.
But then they're.
I don't, I don't like the idea, but.
I think they're just going to hear he's authorized up to thirty-three and then they're just going to be, all right, I'll take it under thirty-three.
How else are you going to do it, yeah?
We'd have to have a closed session.
I was told you make me a reasonable offer and we'll we'll let it go. They they know where it's going and what it's, what it's going to be doing, so, you know what I mean, so.
I would like to be around twenty-five on it. I think that's, that's definitely what it's worth because you can, they're all over auction sites, the same, same unit, same year. But like Steve said, you don't know what you're getting, but you're saving eight or nine thousand and buying it, you know.
Offer him twenty-five, you could buy one for twenty thousand and put in fifteen thousand in to fix it.
Yes, there's always, there's always that risk.
That's a chance you take.
Yep.
And once you bought it, you own it and you're.
I know, but I think twenty-five is a fair offer myself.
The thing to, the other thing to think about is we've rented this particular machine recently, the last couple of years. And so it's kind of like something that you've been using and, you know, you know that it's been stored inside, all that kind of stuff. And when you use it, it's not like, not like it needs work. We've rented other machines from other places that have no brakes, that they've had to come out and work on. You know what I mean? So we know what this machine is, we know what kind of condition it's in because we've rented it, we've used it. And there's something to be said about that. You know, you go to an auction, you don't know, it looks good, but I don't know what I'm getting until I get it home and use it. This one we have used.
And that's why we're paying, that's why that twenty-five would be ten thousand over what they get in an auction for it. So I mean, it's, I think it's a fair price myself, but that's just one vote.
Where do you plan on barking it? Travis.
Work something out.
The old salt shed. The old salt shed.
I didn't want to say that public either. I I think we could find someplace for it.
Not at the police station?
What's that?
Not at the police station?
Probably not.
Well, there's, I mean, there's an old salt shed that's going to be up for, open for storage. Wouldn't be ideal, but it.
It'd be, it'd be undercover.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could figure something out.
Is there, there's not power ran out to that, the old salt shed area, is there?
No, no.
What do you want to do on this?
I'd like to have a budget session first.
But it's already going to be coming out of this budget already, that's already set, George. It's not, it's not going into the next budget. It's already coming out of this budget.
Yeah, but what I was looking at, we're already over budget for stuff we didn't anticipate and. Yeah, but what I was looking at, we're already over budget for stuff we didn't anticipate and I just don't wanna keep adding on to it. We're only, not even quite to the half-year mark. And if we keep on this track, I'm worried about how much over budget we're gonna be. Uh, we still have numbers coming in from a liquor store. That looks good. It, it's up. You know, that might be able to offset some of these things, but I mean, we can ask Mike generically, you know, what he thinks if, but that's gonna, that could very well change.
The other thing that I said that we've been pretty creative about, you know, things around the shop, unloading stuff like that, some of that becomes a little bit, let's be safe here. You know, this gives us a lot more control to do a lot of stuff. So there is a safety concern with some of that stuff that we've, you know, been a little sketch at times because sometimes we're asked to do some stuff that's like, okay, well, that's how we're gonna make this happen. Let's be creative and let's be safe. This gives us a lot more control.
Off a hundred thousand dollar piece of, piece of equipment off of the, off of the trailer because you didn't have the right equipment.
Right.
That just paid for itself.
Yeah, you flip a bobcat over, that's, gets expensive fast, so.
I guess if this is the only wish list thing that we're going to do this year, it isn't too bad. I think we're, we can probably do it and stay in budget, but.
Anybody else wanna?
Decision we, we have to vote on tonight.
Anybody else wanna put a number on it?
I'd give them authorization of up to thirty thousand. I wouldn't go with that twenty-five.
I could, I could probably go twenty-eight.
I'd go twenty-eight.
If you're gonna make the motion, just make it for the twenty-five.
I agree. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion for twenty-five thousand dollar offer on it and I guess if they don't take it, then we can come back if it's still for sale in a month and see.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill to go up to twenty-five thousand dollars on this purchase and I have a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye. That motion carries three-two. Moving on to K four, the joint powers agreement for CASA five at East Dole Boulevard intersection.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this has multiple parts to this item. Um, we do have the joint powers agreement that we're gonna go through first. Then we do have an engineering proposal for the project and then lastly, I'd like to discuss having a public information meeting. Uh, so we'll get started with the, uh, joint powers agreement. So outlined in here are the terms of the project. This is a joint project for CASA five and East Dole Boulevard, um, for the roundabout that we've had with the I Sanne County. The I Sanne County Highway Department and Engineer and our engineer and staff have, um, gone back and forth on this. We do feel like this, we mutually agree for the most part here and are ready to present this to City Council. I will add that this did go before the county board at one of their committee meetings for discussion where they did, um, go through the terms of where we had some unknown, where we had highlighted at our last committee meeting for discussion. And they did approve this this morning, uh, the draft before you and included in the packet is, um, the one that they approved at their county board meeting this morning. So the agreement for the most part has not changed. We did clarify language, um, which was highlighted in our last, uh, review of the draft for the, um, liability section. We had both the city attorney and county attorney, uh, look at that language. And ultimately, uh, really both languages were kept to make sure that everybody felt whole. And it really is just making sure that, um, everybody's being responsible for themselves, but it has some extra legal lingo in there. Um, and then I'll bring you forward to section five point zero one, the ownership of improvements is where we spent some time having some discussion. Uh, we did share with the county, uh, engineer, he shared with the county commissioners of our desire to have, uh, the city not to take on full plowing as was presented in the first draft, to not take on the boulevard and to not fully take on the lighting. So where we ended up was with, uh, the county will be doing the majority of the clearing of the snow. Through mutual aid, we will assist. Uh, we do wanna just make sure that that intersection is kept safe for all those who use it. Pedestrians, um, truck traffic and all vehi- vehicular traffic. Make sure it's safe for everybody. So obviously if somebody got hung up and couldn't do something, we're not gonna leave it unplowed and unmanageable. So I feel like that was a very good coordinated effort on that language. The county did agree to take out the boulevard. Um, it was stated that they really don't have an issue. Let's not make an issue insert, um, having some entity be a part of, or in charge of the ownership on something that wasn't there before, so we mutually agreed to take that out. And then lastly, we get to the, um, lighting for the roundabout. As I had shared with the council via, um, correspondence, that the county does have an agreement with the city back from our other project on Whiskey and County Road five for that lighting intersection. Uh, it was agreed upon at that time that the city would take on the electrical expense. I'll remind you that the city does take on electrical spends all across CASA five, uh, for all the lighting. None of those costs currently go to this, the county. And the county did desire to keep it the same as had been done past practice and has currently for electrical. So the language included in there is that upon completion of the project, the city shall assume responsibility for the monthly electrical service expense essential for operating the intersection lighting and maintenance costs. And let me know if you have any questions.
So as far as the lighting goes, I mean, that was, that was kinda the only sticking point that I thought we kinda had left there after I, I reviewed this, uh, yesterday afternoon. And, uh, you know, I, I think when you're talking about lighting in this particular case where at, at Whiskey and five, it's, it's a stoplight that's the actual control of the intersection, right? Where the roundabout really is required to have the lighting, uh, as part of the, the traffic control system basically. When you look at, the, the county doesn't put lighting out on, on county roads, right? But they do put it out at the roundabout on forty-seven and ninety-five. So, I mean, I think there's, there's an argument we could make that that really should be split going forward on one-third, two-third. But when you're talking about, about, you know, nine hundred dollars a year total and are you gonna go through the hassle factor of charging the county six hundred bucks and, and delaying this project, you know, further from what it is now?
But those lights are expensive too when they burn out. It's, it's another cost. You know, I, I see it as it's, they get the funding for that road. I think they should, they should cover the, the lighting. Um, to me, it doesn't matter what previous councils did for other intersections in the years past those previous councils. Um, I think really the only fair way to do it is how we've always done it. The amount of legs in the intersection is who pays for what. That's how it should be maintained. I think, I don't think the city residents should have to pay for it, especially because they're already paying taxes to the county to pay for things like that. So that's, that's my two cents on that. I think it should be a two-thirds, one-third. And that's that. Otherwise our residents are being double taxed.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? But, I mean, they're aware of that, that that's our feeling, I think. I mean, Josie, you and I kinda talked about that yesterday a little bit and, and we have some county commissioners in the room. I'm sure we could, could ask about that as well, but I mean, I think they, they, after our last meeting, we already had put that, that information forward that we would have liked to have seen that split, right? So, I mean, they know that that's really where we expected it to be. They did, they did negotiate with us on a few other areas that I think, you know, worked out. I mean, and we did, of course, you know, it looks like we're gonna kinda do some of the cleanup around the, the surmountable, surmountable center of that roundabout, but.
But it's their road. They get the funding for it. They should be responsible for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think splitting it one-third, two-third would be more fair.
Right, I, I agree, but, I mean, that's already a kind gesture in itself, I think.
I just wanna remind you, you wanted to put more lights on five.
Oh, I did.
We would've been paying for it, so.
Well, now we're gonna pay for it anyways, so what we could've done it a long time ago.
Oh, we're not gonna pay to put them up, though. I mean, Steve's right about that, too.
So, I mean, just bear that in mind, but for nine hundred dollars a year to operate those lights, I, I don't, I think we've spent worse things on dumber things too.
But those lights are expensive too when we have to replace them. I mean, what was, wasn't it like five or seven thousand dollars per, per light to replace those? I mean, if those last ten years, you gotta add an extra five hundred dollars per light into our budget. So if you have ten lights, it's, that's six thousand dollars a year that we're paying that on a county road that they collect taxes for. We don't collect a dime of taxes.
The lifespan of those light, lights is gonna be a lot longer than ten years.
Well, and Canexus does upgrade them and we have not been charged, like when they went out and upgraded them to LED or there's been an issue. The concern would be is if, uh, the same light pole was hit multiple times, even the first time, a representative from Canexus said, you're likely not gonna get charged. But if it becomes a chronic, um, you know, it's being taken out by a person, a driver, whatever, uh, that we could have to turn that into our insurance and make a claim on it, but it isn't going to happen right off the bat. They do take for the, I mean, I hate to say ownership loosely, but it is their pole. So they do their own maintenance and they don't charge us for some of that.
Yes, that's another thing I thought of too. If people are driving on a county road and they hit a light, why should the city be on the hook for replacing the light?
Why shouldn't the people that hit the light be responsible for it?
Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree.
Plain and simple, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I will add that we are responsible for the ones on sixty-five as well. So on the J-turn, that one did get hit. That was an insurance claim.
On sixty-five?
Does require that the local jurisdiction take those over.
Who does? Who requires that?
MinDOT.
Of course.
I guess in that situation, I mean, how did that end up being our responsibility and not the driver that hit it? I mean, the driver that hit it drove away or what?
So it did, it, it goes to our insurance. We pay our deductible, but like, for example, in that instance, we, I will just, three, six, twelve months later, I'll get a check for six or eight thousand dollars.
Reimbursed for that cost.
You get reimbursed, but you're, you're deductible and it's another claim.
Your insurance goes up.
You know, you gotta probably to really affect, you know, our insurance for the amount that we're covering and paying, you probably gotta hit quite a few light poles to really start to make a difference. It's not like a workers' comp thing, right? These are relatively speaking, small numbers against the, the larger policy.
When they, when they, when they quote us our insurance price, I'm sure they imagine that they're gonna replace a, a, a light pole or two if that's the case. I mean, if that's the standard.
That's a really common claim in, in any city. Yep.
What Ms. Rand is passing out is the resolution. So if we move forward with this, we will attach the JPA to a resolution so we can keep track of it as a contract. Just FYI, that's what she's passing out. It is now included in your packet, but it wasn't when you initially reviewed it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, any other thoughts? Otherwise I'll look for a motion to, to move forward on this if, uh, or if you guys have some other doubts or concerns.
I'd say let's move forward. I think a motion move forward.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, uh, we do have the engineering proposal included as this, so if we could do it together, I'll kick it over to, uh, the engineer if you have any questions for him about the proposal. Just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that is together in that joint powers agreement. The county did approve that as part of it, um, which it means that the city will be taking the lead on this project and we will be using our engineering firm.
Which I think is another nice feature of this agreement too.
You don't have to have questions for him, but I just wanted to make sure you knew.
I make a motion to approve the contract with our engineer, whatever you want there.
Jason, I have another question. I've been giving it some considerable thought. I assume that our grant is only allowed, allowing for a one-lane roundabout. We couldn't make it a two-lane roundabout at this point? Or is that something we can still do in the design phase? Because I've driven through a bunch of two-lane roundabouts, especially the, the Forest Lake one, and they work great. So I know you had said that they might be more dangerous, but I, for that intersection, I think it's a better option. Is that something we can do in the design phase? Or is it just too late entirely for that?
Um, I guess it's primarily too late. Um, it's also not the recommended, um, lane configuration. Um, that's why that study was done to figure out we have one lane coming in.
But we found a lot of flaws in that study too.
Well, but, but the single, like for a mini, you pretty much need a single lane. Because if you have two, the outer lane is always gonna trailer over into the other lane and, and they just, they're too tight a radius to function. And we don't have the room to go bigger than a mini.
Okay.
And so we're, again, that's kinda why I'm saying we're, we're pretty much a single lane mini is, is the fit.
Okay.
I guess, uh, on the second lane topic though, um, you know, there has been that additional little bit of conversation on being able to get a, the extra lane, uh, to drop off as the quick trip.
Yep, exit, yep.
Um, you know, that would be something that we'll still be able to look at because we already had it in the original configuration to have that lane drop. It's just whether we're able to, um, expand that to have its own lane, you know, and just have that end entering in. And, you know, that hopefully can reroute any of the, the larger truck traffic, if not everybody, uh, that wants to just go to quick trip to not even enter the mini.
Okay.
Leave it beforehand.
Yep.
Um, so we'd be able to make those kinda modifications.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that motion? Well, I'll second it. So all in favor of the, uh, the joint powers agreement and the contract with, uh, Bolton and Mink there to manage this project, say aye.
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 All, all opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries four-one.
Uh, and then Mayor and Council, I'd like a little discussion on public information meeting. Do you have a preference, um, on when it is held? If you want to attend, we can work with your schedule after this meeting. If you don't want a public meeting, let me know, but otherwise I think that it would be great to have a public meeting here, um, in city limits. So we can be opening up to the public if they have any questions, concerns about the project and get their input.
I still say a stoplight would have been a much more popular opinion.
I don't disagree, but this, at that point, this was the lesser of two evils.
It was, it was better, it was better than a double roundabout, so. Yeah, no, I mean, I think we should have public comment and I, I expect that there'll be some pretty upset people, so.
And it'll also be a good time for them, um, as we're doing final design and as Jason's team is doing that, to take in the input like from the apartment complex and their access and, and all that too.
I would like to be as involved in that as I can too, just so it's not a long-term boo-boo that the city makes.
I will look for, um, coordinate our schedule together with Mr. Cook and myself and then I'll send that a couple of dates and we'll find a date that works for what everybody thinks is best and we'll get it posted.
All right, that sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to K five, authorizing the fire district to occupy the facility prior to city receiving final payment.
Mayor and Council, as Councilmember Lindine had shared, there is discussion and, um, a favorable, uh, motion, it looks like, of the board to occupy the facility early as was shared with council. We do have our police department fully in the new facility and they have vacated and cleaned out the old facility. Uh, the request was that they cover, uh, the costs that the city would be paying. I did provide, uh, Chief Jankovic, uh, quotes on what we, or just an estimate of rounding what we paid in twenty-twenty-two when police occupied that full-time for Center Point, Canexus, insurance costs, water and sewer. And looking from direction on, from the council, uh, per the request that was made from the fire district board was to possibly have water and sewer costs waived as well as asking the council and city to have public works continue to mow that facility or the grounds and plow in the wintertime. So, um, and then beyond that, once, depending on how the discussion goes, then we'll talk about next steps, what we need to do.
I for one feel that I think the city plowing that lot even continuing after they move in is a must.
I agree.
I think mowing it isn't a big deal. I don't think it probably takes them more than fifteen minutes to mow what grass is there. So it, but, but mowing would have to be more of a, when we're going by type of thing. I have absolutely no problem with the city continuing that even after they purchased the building.
I agree with both of those.
Now, the sewer and water, I understand that. I guess I'd have to, I, I brought up to Ms. Wood, I, I, she was, to have those figures what the sewer and water has been for the last year there.
The cost on the sewer and water was about two thousand dollars for annually for a, for a full year.
Now, bear in mind, we're paying forty-some percent, the city's paying, of that bill automatically. So let's just, let's just say it at fifty percent. City's paying a thousand dollars for that.
Well, not to mention, I mean, a lot of that sewer charges, I mean, you're, a lot of that water's not actually going into the sewer either, right? So, I mean, it's, it's metered on the, the, the output of it, but we're not actually putting that tax on the, the sewer system, even though we're.
Because you're filling tanks and whatnot.
Right, you're filling tanks and that water's going on fires. I mean, it's, it's not something that's actually gonna be used as sewer, so.
So I don't know. You guys, you guys decide on that. I, I'm kinda up near and up. We're still gonna hit me a hit for, like I said, fifty percent of that charge. So, so say roughly, we're gonna pay a thousand dollars a year on that. Maybe a good face with that. I mean, they, they are a separate entity, but yet we are part of that entity as a city. I, that's my two cents.
Just to clarify, the water and sewer usage is for the PD side. So the side that they're using now on the fire side is not metered. That's, or not being charged sewer charges over there. That's separately. This is for like the bathrooms, the kitchen facility.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a meter there, sorry, but. Yes.
And that is for our two thousand five piece of meat.
Yes.
Okay. So that's just for the. Okay. So that's just for the cost of what the police department side was, was incurring, but, I mean, I don't imagine we would use that much water even compared to what they were using probably on that side.
You, you would expect water use compared to PD to go down?
Way down, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's amongst you. I gave my two cents. I would, I would, I would waive the sewer and water fee. I have a hard time with that, because we do charge the PD, we do charge Public Works, we charge each one of our own entities this. But now, it's a public service at this point, as them being a separate entity. I can't see it being more than, cost is more than nine hundred dollars a year.
I guess I, I see it as, you know, every resident and business pays for their water and sewer. So it's hard to give them that, but at the same time, I do understand what you're saying, too, because they do provide a service. I think the plowing and the mowing is a good, is something I would love to be in favor of. But I, I don't know about the water and sewer. It's a bit of a hard pull for me on that one.
You're saying the police department, we charge them for water and sewer. It comes out of their budget, even though it makes no sense, because it's all the same budget. That's where the fire department is a separate entity and that's, that's what I always have the hardest time with this. I wanna keep it fair and I wanna definitely do what the right thing to do is. So if we didn't do it, we're still paying forty percent, right?
Right.
So...
Roughly, it's like forty-three or forty-four percent somewhere in there.
All right. So, we're talking nine hundred a year, but we were just talking about lighting for the street and we said, oh, it's only nine hundred a year. So, you know what I mean? These, it, it just can add up and add up and add up.
But that nine hundred is gonna be another nine hundred that we gotta put on a budget to the fire department. That's all gonna get pushed equated back into the...
That's true, too.
So it's gonna come out of our pocket one way or another.
But the, the other percentage is shared by the rest of the fire district and not just the city residents.
But like I said, figure the fifty percent. It's the easier math to do instead of trying to get equated in that. You, you're splitting hairs by two, three, four, ten dollars. I mean, let's, let's be realistic on that. So, why don't we do this? We'll think about the water and sewer thing. Let's first get through the snow plowing and the mowing. I make a motion that we...
Let me, let me give you one more idea here. So if, if the fire department side now is only paying water, they're not paying any sewer, right? Is that what you, you had said? That's what we're doing now, or we're not, we pay nothing now? Okay, gotcha. I thought you said...
We, we meter everything.
Meter it, but you don't pay it. I got you. Okay, well, then that compromise won't work, so. Okay, go ahead, Steve. Sorry.
I make a motion that we do the, continue snow plowing for whatever length of time, however, even after they own the building and mowing the grass.
Yeah, we definitely should do, always do the snow plowing, because that's an emergency service. Our guys are the most available. They get right on it before a private contractor ever could, I believe. And, yeah, if mowing is gonna be, if we're driving by, we stop in and do it, and I'm sure they have to drive by when they do other stuff. That's fine. And then, bring the others back to discussion.
Bring back the others to discussion. Let's solve one bleep frog in another on here. So that was my motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman, that we continue to mow the grass and plow the snow at Station One. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Do you want to discuss any further on that right now or you wanna, what are you guys thinking? I mean, I'd like, might as well solve the problem now. I mean, if we're gonna...
Rip the bandaid off.
Yeah.
So it is, Mayor and Council, it's good to have direction. So what I will do with that motion that was just passed is I will create a resolution, because that will be a donation of the city giving, for the good of the public, to a, another entity. So that does have to be done by resolution. So I will draft that resolution, put on the next city council meeting on consent. And then, depending on whatever net comes next, I will then amend the agreement that we have with them, whether it's the, the lease you own or their original two thousand five lease, do another addendum to that, to make sure that we have all the documentation. So what you do next, we'll also go on the next council meeting, just to ensure that that is formally approved.
Yeah, I mean, I guess in my opinion, I mean, on the sewer and water stuff, I mean, it is, I mean, it's not a cost necessarily to us. I mean, it's money that I guess we'd have to, we receive that is nice to have. I mean, that, that is, so I guess there is a cost, but, I mean, you're, you're, it's, you know, the reality of, of foregoing that payment is that your wear and tear on your water is, and your sewer system is a little bit, little bit of wear and tear. You know what I mean?
Those are all true statements. It is also true to say is, this is not, whether we give the fire department, you know, we take care of water and sewer for them or not, is not going to break the bank. I am not going to drastically revise forthcoming rate studies on that decision.
Right. What do you think?
Me?
Yeah.
Not...
It made more sense when he explained it, because if you have money in and money out, it, it, that, we were doing it for the police department. So it basically was no cost on our budget, because it just basically was a wash, all said and done. So I don't see how it would change with the fire department. What threw a wrench in it was looking at it as the district, where we're helping out the townships by paying, where they're not...
The net result, the net result of letting them have sewer and water for nothing is the same as what we're doing now.
Exactly. Now that might kind of clarify the way it, it will probably be on the budget. I, I have no problem with the sewer and the water not charging them.
I make, I make a motion not to charge for sewer and water.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to not charge for sewer and water for the fire department on the police department side, from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye. I have a quick question. Do, Al, do you ever, right now, it's not a full-time house, so there's not really people there very often, is there?
Here, let me, let me finish. So that motion carries four to one. Now, now, if you want to ask a question.
Um, do you ever see that being fully staffed to where the point where it would actually cost us more for water and sewer? Like, is that a, ever, you know, if the city of Istanee got huge?
Huge, yeah. Besides, uh...
Lane?
Bigger than Cambridge, yes. I could see us having more full-time staff there, but that's not gonna be in my lifetime.
Okay.
Unless you guys can see a Walmart and a Target and Applebee's and those other...
Open Costco.
Costco.
But right now, you have to realize, there's only one full-time officer.
Yeah, that's...
Or person, and that's him.
That's what I'm saying. I was thinking...
And he can go to the gas station, use the bathroom once in a while.
I was thinking there's, there's not much traffic there now, so I have...
There isn't.
So I, I don't have an objection with that, but my thing is, you know, we just said in two thousand five, we made an agreement that the city doesn't charge sewer and water. Well, now, we just made an agreement in twenty twenty-four. What if that house becomes full-time? Now, it's gonna cost us more money in the future. So, and it's hard to set, we already set a precedent, so now we can't take it back. So that's, that was why I, I made that, just because I think in the long term, there's gonna, it might be a full-time house and there's gonna be more actual costs than, than what there is now, so.
But then, when that time comes, they'll probably be more unhappy to pay for it.
Maybe. I mean, we just, just like they just said, two thousand five.
If it goes to be that big of a town where they have to have more full-time officers, that means our budget has just increased immensely, like tripled.
If you're, if you're that big, you're probably not gonna have a fire district anymore. You'll just have a...
A fire department.
We're gonna need a much bigger building as well.
Okay. And just remember, they used to pay one dollar for rent on that building for a year. Right. But then it was increased like twenty thousand.
No, more than.
So I, in my view, the city has gotten a huge benefit out of that. Oh, right, for sure. So... Yep. To give them a thousand dollars, right, for this year, it's nothing in my eyes.
And it doesn't change the end result of what we had with the police department being there either, as far as...
And it's actually gonna prob, like I said, it's gonna probably be less sewer and water use.
Yeah, I just want to have a follow-up question, so Al kind of understood where I voted and maybe fill a question mark for people. Thank you.
Can I get clarification on that motion? I don't know if I heard that it's allowed by council for us to occupy that building. All I heard was discussion on...
That's the next part.
Okay.
We do have to, yeah. Yep, and that actually, so if council is approving or consensus is for them to move in early, we just need a date, or it's a date that you want the chief and myself to work out. And then I will amend the lease agreement and that will come back to the next council meeting.
I, I'm, I'm, I'll motion that we, you and Al figure out a date to start.
I'll second that.
Yeah, as soon as possible. I mean, if the police department's a hundred percent out of it, I don't see why they can't move in tomorrow.
Well, we'll wait till the lease agreement, so then it outlines, because they do have to ensure that they're gonna take out over insurance, the electrical power.
Sure.
So that'll be part of that. So you'd be able to take, take occupancy the day after the agreement gets approved at council, or the lease. So June fifth will probably be the date.
So do you, you need a motion from us now, then?
I don't, actually.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to K-six, funding flagpole and signage at the police department. I was just asked to look into those two items and bring it to council and that you guys decide what you want to do, when you want to do it and if you want to do it. We don't have a flagpole, we have no signage, and the only signage I was thinking that made more sense is just the word "police" on the building, probably on the south side and the east side. And those plastic letters, like, commercial plastic lettering is five hundred dollars a side, and a flagpole's twenty-eight hundred dollars. So we have two thousand dollars in our repairs budget for the building. We ate up, I don't know, whatever the low lift cost to work on our windows. Is allowed for that, too. So there's some money there, but not that. So, like I said, that's up to you guys to decide if you want to do it now, if you want to push it out to next year, if you want to push it out longer. That, that's your decision. And there's gonna be other capital improvement things, and maybe you put it into that, too, at some point. Those are just, I didn't get three quotes, that type of thing. Those are the numbers we got. Just wanted to know how hard to look into that, or if you wanted to do that. So like I said, the flagpoles, with the flags, like, twenty-nine hundred dollars, and each one of those sides is five hundred dollars apiece.
So is that, is that flagpole just for the United States flag or is it the state flag as well?
Be one pole.
Okay, so...
So whatever.
Okay.
At the current, or at the previous facility, we had the United States flag and the POW flag that flew on the same pole.
Okay.
Whether we continue that practice, but we've never had a city or a state flag at the police department.
Okay, I just want to say, if we do go forward with this, I want to make it part of the agreement that if we do put a state flag on it, it's never the new one that was just passed by the state.
Well, we've already passed a resolution.
Right, but I just want to make sure that...
And actually, technically, they're not enforcing anybody to use that new state yet.
Right, right, but I want to make sure that future...
Unless you're in a courthouse.
Once we buy, if we do buy this, I want to make sure that there's no chance that the city can even eventually, twenty years from now, decide to put that state flag there.
Well, they can always pass a new resolution.
That resolution...
Hate to be the mayor Brad News, but the next council, I mean, I mean, it could change, but the practice right now, what's adopted, is that we will fly the same flag that we've...
Okay, I had a local reporter tell me that that resolution did not say that, that when we run out of flags, then we would be flying a new flag, basically is, is...
We would use up what we have.
We will fly, as long as we can purchase it, we will fly the previous flag.
Okay.
But then after that, are we gonna fly the new one?
So is the resolution saying we will fly that flag until we re, uh, rescind that resolution?
I guess that, I'd have to pull up the resolution to recall the exact verbiage. I, I don't remember. But it is to oppose the new flag, to fly the old flag, and at the time that we will no longer be able to purchase those, if, as long as I'm here, I would bring that back to council, because then it would be a council decision to fly a flag or no flag on that pole and what we would do next.
Okay.
But I, and that'll only become a problem until I can't find the previous state flag.
How often do you place that state flag?
Couple times a year.
March order, many of you can't.
I can't believe it actually passed. That...
That's all right. Let's...
Yeah, let's stay on, let's stay on track here. So I, I said, let's get it done, and... The only cost that include in this is the rental of a lift as well. Reality.
So should we hold off and...
I mean, that's true, because I would, I would assume Public Works would... Well, in that case, you know, I mean, maybe we ought to hold off, but...
No, I think, I think we should get a flag out there and I think that just represents our police department as much as possible.
I agree.
If we could, if, if there is a motion to, for staff to move forward to purchase a flagpole and a signage to include in that motion to amend the budget, because we don't have funding for that. So that is why it is here as a request as well. Thank you.
I do think it's important to have a police sign out there. I think it makes people feel like, hey, if something happens, I know exactly where to go. You know, downtown on the, on Heritage there, it was really nice having the police right there and you just know that that's a safe place.
And that's, you know, we have a sign in the window and kind of put one marked car up front, but that's not really...
Right.
Doesn't tell you that's the police department, just because the police car could be sitting anywhere, right, so...
Right. Well, I motion to go ahead with the purchase of the flag and the signage. I make that motion.
I'll second.
What was the total cost of that between the...
Well, the...
Approximately four thousand dollars, not including the lift rental, if needed.
So the lift could be used to put up the sign and the flagpole.
Yeah, and on a side note with that, just drive by their PD and, you know, we're assuming our capital plan to get the blue stripes put on there, but on a commercial painter, it was a ten thousand dollar bid. You can look in how much work it actually is.
Yeah.
But you need a lift. You can always rent one.
How about a ladder truck?
Yeah. There's, there's an idea. All right, I had a motion from Councilman Lundin and, who was the second?
I did.
Uh, second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Approving the consent agenda, any, anything you guys want to ask any questions on or anything like that?
So I did do a little more research on L-five, the signs. I'm waiting to hear back on two quotes for those sign, the signposts. If we could maybe delay on that until I get some quotes, because I did look at Granger and through Granger, it was about a thousand dollars cheaper than the estimate that we have. So I think it'd be worth holding off on that for another day or however long it did, Josie thinks it might take to get something from Granger. Just looking at their website, it was roughly a thousand dollars cheaper than, unless you found something different.
No.
Okay.
Are you contacting Granger? Do you want staff to contact Granger with the sign?
Uh, you guys need to, because I don't have a commercial account. They won't talk to me without a commercial account.
But I did, did, did we have a different bid, though, that was in the admin update?
Yeah, it was Core Mark Metals.
Well, and, so we have three total, and the admin update kind of swirled, so that one from the tenth got out today as well. But we have EFA signs. We have two primary sign companies that we go with, that we typically quote every sign, because some are higher and lower depending on which kind of sign. So we go through EFA and EFA with the seventy-five speed limit signs and then the posts, and we need a top post and a bottom post. So it's seventy-five for a top, seventy-five posts for the bottom. Came to six thousand five hundred ninety-six and twenty-five cents, plus freight was not on that. Then we have M and R signs for the signs, and then seventy-five for the top, seventy-five for the bottom posts, came to six thousand eight hundred and four and thirty-one cents, including freight. And then we had a quote from Core Mark, just quoting the seventy-five posts for top and bottom, no signs, was seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety cents, and not including freight.
Well, all, all of those first two were, I mean, well, actually, I'll, I'll know, because the last one didn't include signs, right?
Correct. They don't make signs.
So we were, we were thinking it was gonna be about ten grand when we had the meeting last time, so I mean, we did end up coming in quite a bit cheaper.
The second one with freight, the second one with freight is, I didn't realize the freight was included, so that's a...
The other thing is, even though I said seventy-five, these quotes were seventy-five top, seventy-five bottom posts, we will likely order a hundred, just because the volume there. And you're not paying any more freight to add those on, and we always need posts. They always get taken out or something. So it would be slightly higher than that, but when we're comparing apples to apples, those numbers are, can be measured against each other.
So I did have a question. I looked at the, the specs. You sent me the specs on those. The bottoms are three and a half inch and the tops are three inch. Is there a reason that the bottoms are, are bigger?
Uh, they're bigger because of the top one in sets inside of it, so they overlap.
The other ones will still stack, though, too, won't they?
No.
They won't stack in, inside of each other?
No, there is, there actually is, like, we have tops and bottom posts.
Okay, because if you look at, if you look at Granger, they only sell, that I can see, they only sell one, one size. So how are they stacking, able to stack those to make their signs taller?
Because they're probably just driving one post down and using one post. They're not making them replaceable.
I guess I'm not sure.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was, it's probably like a MINDOT requirement that we, that we follow the, their...
Yeah, we do go down about four feet and we do make, I mean, you do want to have at the point where the vehicles... Yeah, we do go down about four feet and we do make, I mean, you do want to have at the point where the vehicle's gonna hit it that it does break over.
Right.
So there is that too. Um, but this has been our standard that we've always used of the top and bottom.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could do it and not have to spend so much money. I mean, how are our other cities doing it? I didn't know if it was like a standard that it was, or if we are exceeding the the standard or how that works.
Jason, do you know that answer?
I guess I, I don't actually. I don't believe they have to have the break off. It's just in the end, it's less effort and cost for the city to repair them.
Oh, I agree with the break off. I'm just wondering the standard of the pole that's used because all these metal suppliers, they all sell tons of sign, signposts. But then if you ask them for this specific type, they're like, nobody uses that. What's that? So.
I do know that there are lighter poundage, like these are, you know, the two pound.
Two pound and three pound, yep.
And three pound, yeah. There are lighter poles, posts you can get.
Do we, I mean, do we have to get the the heavy ones? That's my question.
It was my direction for them to stay with what we've used in the past. So that's what he got quoted.
Yeah, the lighter ones actually, you know, can twist in the wind and and end up bending easier and be crooked more and be more maintenance to do. So usually that, that heavier gauge is.
Are we exceeding the standard, that that ever, the average standard that most cities do? Are we on, on par? Or do you have any idea?
Same things that get called out in every city I work in, so.
The two and three pound?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Figure the better when it comes to commercial stuff.
Well, I I agree, but I didn't know if we were doubling, like overkill hardcore on those. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and I have a second, uh, excuse me, from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
And that's with waiting to see if we can get a cheaper bid on the sign, on the posts? Because I, I'm waiting to hear back from two companies.
I don't know if this is approving the posts. It's approving the the speed limit plan, right?
It's approving the speed limit plan, adding in Johnson Meadows Development is what's on the consent agenda.
Okay.
But I do know that you want to.
Okay, I didn't know if it included the purchase of the signs.
No, it did not.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I did have another question on L two. People have asked about that particular business. Can anyone elaborate on what they do there, what that is? L two, the Tibetan American Found, I don't remember the abbreviation now.
Is it a church or I don't?
All I can say is that it was a Tibetan, Tibetan organization that purchased that. Uh, used to be spectacular events over there. I do think that they hold some, hold some large events over there, a couple, maybe a couple of times a year. They've made some great improvements to the, to the facility and grounds, but other than that, I guess I, we, we don't really hear much from them.
Okay.
Over at the church.
Yeah.
I drove by there one day.
I get a lot of.
A lot of people were there.
Yeah, and I get a lot of questions on what it is, so I, I guess I'll just.
My favorite thing is it must be the Tibetan New Year and then they, they light off all of those, you know, Chinese lanterns and stuff like that. I was driving home one time and I mean, they were just, the sky was just full of them. Yeah. Um, but yeah, I don't know. I don't, I guess I kind of thought it was a church, but I don't know if it is a church or if it's just a.
It's their, it's their gathering place.
Yeah, yep, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have, what, what were you gonna say?
Oh, I was just gonna say the full name was Tibetan American Foundation Minnesota. So I'm sure they have a website to learn more, but.
I'll second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. We are adjourned. And then I want to maybe give it a couple of minutes here and we'll jump into the, uh, committee of the whole meeting again.